And then there was silence. What can I tell you? This is a wonderful thing. I’m gonna take it home. Okay, everyone, this is such an exciting time for us all. And thank you all for being so courteous. And we will go into our first item, which is Agenda Item 7. And who am I? Oh, no, I’m never missing Councilman Anthony. We’ve changed our seats around here. Okay, so it’s a little... And if you are... And I have to get used to voices. So, okay. Our new lady councilpersons? We have all three ladies and... All four ladies in a row.
Yes.
Is that right? Look at this. So, please say your name. Just say Councilwoman whatever, so I know whose voice it is until I get used to us all. All right. Public comment during this... This is Agenda Item 7. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue except to thank you if you are gonna laud any one of our newly-elected councilpersons. We will set the time at 1:00. The rush is over. We’ll move on to Agenda Item 8. Wrong. We are moving directly to Agenda Item 36. Boards and Commissions. Discussion for possible action to elect Councilwoman Michelle Fiore... Fiore. Better get that one straight. ...to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. I move to appoint Councilwoman Fiore as the incoming Mayor Pro Tem. Would you please vote? And then post, please.
Yes.
Yes. Done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So glad, so glad. Okay, we will move now on to Agenda Item 8. Business Items for Possible Action. Any items from the 9:00 AM session that the council staff and applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. For your first order of business, Mayor Pro Tem, would you please attend to this?
Yes. So, I move to approve the minutes. What do you want, minutes?
No, we’re gonna be on Agenda Item 8.
The Item 32?
Yes.
Okay. So, yes, so Agenda Item 32, the report from our great city manager, Scott D. Adams, on emerging issues, was requested to be stricken by staff, and that will be my motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There’s a motion to strike Agenda Item 32. Please vote and please post. That motion unanimous... Oh, how nice to be able to say unanimously. Onto Agenda Item 9. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference May 1 and 15, 2019 regular City Council meetings, and May 20, 2019 special City Council meeting, Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion to approve those minutes.
Yes, motion to approve.
Thank you. There’s a motion to approve on Agenda Item 9. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries as well. Now, we will move on to Agenda Item number 10. Items number 10 through 31 on the consented agenda considered to be routine and recommended for approval by the departments that may be enacted in one motion. Note of correction must be made on Item 23, as it is located within Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz and not in Ward 6, as printed. Are there any other items council wishes to bring forward? Okay, we will vote on the motion, please. The consented agenda, Items number 10 through 31 with that correction. And if you’ll vote and then post. And that motion carries. Thank you. We’re moving on now to Agenda Item 33. A report by Mr. Bill Arnt, Director of Economic Urban Development (EUD) on economic development projects and initiatives being undertaken by the City of Las Vegas is in reference to all wards. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. For the record, I’m Bill Arnt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. Councilman Knudsen, Councilwoman Seaman, and Councilwoman Diaz, congratulations on your oath of office. I sincerely look forward to working with each of you to advance economic development in each of your wards, and I’m really excited to work with you. So, again, congratulations. Economic development is the business arm of the city, and as the business arm of the city, our department is tasked with growing business throughout the city of Las Vegas, not only downtown, but throughout all of the wards. And we do this in a variety of ways. We have a great team working with us, and so I’d like to give you an overview of what we’ve done this past year. As we enter the start of a new fiscal year, I believe it’s really important to not only look forward, but to look back at what we, as a department, and also as a city, have accomplished this past year. I’m confident that you will agree with me that the results speak for themselves. So, when we look at the city, of course, everyone sees all the activity in downtown, but I’d like to start with this slide to remind ourselves, as well as our constituents, that we have a great city. We have a real diverse city, and we really touch most of the entire valley. And so, you can see here, the core of our city, our downtown in blue, is an area that we focus heavily on. But you see here with our wards going into the northwest part of the valley, the west part of the valley, and some of the older neighborhoods, we really have a diverse city. And in doing that, we came up with what we believe to be a great economic development strategy. At times, I and our team and our city manager’s office have referred to this as kind of an inside-out strategy, where we’re focusing on some of our strengths, all the great activity that we have in downtown, but also focusing on out in the suburbs and in the wards and some of the growth opportunities that we, as a city, have. And I think this is a really potent combination. Our strategy is really framed up against some of these key objectives and goals, where we’re trying to attract new real estate investment in downtown Las Vegas. We’re trying to grow industrial business parks, and there’s a heavy focus here on west Las Vegas and northwest Las Vegas, realizing that we are kind of constrained as far as how we grow. We have to grow up in the core of our downtown, but in order to grow out, we have to focus on where is their opportunity? And we believe there is tremendous opportunity out in the northwest. We’re focused on building more parking garages to support downtown development, and I’ll touch on why that’s important. And then, we’re also supporting our city’s vision for the future with Vision 2045, where we’re focused on some key industry sectors to how do we grow the business community of Las Vegas and move Las Vegas forward. We’re focused on hospitality, sports, and entertainment. We’re focused on bringing new residents into the city, particularly in the older parts of the city and our urban core. Healthcare and our Las Vegas Medical District is incredibly important, as well as information technology. And this is maybe an unsung hero that I’ll try to sing the praises of today. Talking of unsung heroes, we have some great unsung heroes. We have a wonderful team at Economic and Urban Development, and I don’t think I maybe do enough to recognize them, and so I wanted to recognize them throughout this presentation. We have an administrative team that runs the department. You see them here, a great group of individuals, and we are really acting together as one team to advance the economic development of the city. Our administrative team runs the back office. We also run some special financing programs and some new tools that I think is really gonna move the needle forward. Likewise, we have a great business development team that is working locally, regionally, nationally, and internationally to attract new business to the city, to support the existing business we have, to support entrepreneurship and innovation. And in doing so, they work very closely with local, regional, and state partners. We work hand-in-hand with the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance, the Las Vegas Metro Chamber of Commerce, all of our minority chambers of commerce, other business groups, as well as the Governor’s Office of Economic Development. And now, it’s more important than ever to collaborate and work as one unit to advance the business needs of the city. We have a great parking team. I think we’ve really turned the corner and changed the conversation about what a great place Las Vegas is to do business with, to visit, and to park. We provide great services throughout the year. We get constant compliments directly through our parking enforcement team, also our parking office in dealing with customer complaints, and we’ve made it easier to park with mobile apps, with paying in advance, and really also adding more and more parking. And in order to grow our downtown and become a mature city, we have to advance parking even further. And so, here, you see here, a huge team to run what is a very big operation. And maybe the biggest compliment that I think we’ve had is we’ve had the private sector say, “City of Las Vegas, we want you to manage our parking asset because you do it better.” What a better compliment. What better compliment could we have than to hear a compliment like that from the private sector? We have a great redevelopment team. Tara Anderson, our redevelopment manager, and you see Julie, Brenda, Eric, Jeff, Tracy, and Elizabeth of Advancing Projects in our downtown area. So, what are we doing and how are we doing it? We’re certainly focused on our redevelopment area. Here, you see all the colors on the map. Put simply, this is a way for us to take new tax dollars from new development and appreciation in property and reinvest it back in our city. It has to go for this purpose, and we believe we’ve been investing wisely and aggressively to promote development throughout downtown. We have some great hospitality projects and some great projects on the way. The Expo Center at the World Market Center, Las Vegas, I believe, and our entire team believes, is a game-changer for downtown and the city. We are now not only supporting the home furnishings industry and the gift market at World Market Center, Las Vegas, but we are building a brand-new convention center, a modern convention center, to host meetings and conventions from around the country and around the world, and having that business at our doorstep in downtown.
Excuse me, Mr. Arnt, if I might. The rendering that’s in front of us, I don’t think I’ve seen that one before. Is that the final rendering?
This is one of the final renderings. They’ve changed the elevation a couple of times, and I don’t think this rendering really does it justice, because what they’re building is a 315,000-square-foot convention center in front of the World Market Center, Las Vegas, building, and it’s in active construction. They’re gonna be going vertical with steel, we understand, within the next 30 to 45 days, and wanna be done by mid-year next year in time for summer market. And we believe that it is gonna be a world-class center, and they’re building it to a standard where they can host conventions from around the world to get all that business that’s coming into our community so it can be at our doorstep. But we’ll certainly keep you apprised as they develop and build the project to make sure it is of the highest quality.
Thank you.
One of the things, Mayor, I think, that makes this project exciting and so valuable for the city is our partner. We have a partner in Blackstone, one of the largest real estate investment firms in the world, that owns this campus, as well as a campus in Atlanta in North Carolina, and they’ve consolidated all this as one business to grow the business and bring more business to Las Vegas. This project will be built, as I mentioned, as part of the campus. They’ll be removing the pavilion tents to provide parking, but the most important slide for this project, I would argue, is this slide. We’re gonna have activity throughout the year at this campus. In the past, we’ve had two-week-long conventions, which have brought approximately 50,000-plus visitors to downtown and to our community, and they sell a lot of room nights, but now we’re gonna have this campus activated throughout the year. We’re working closely with our partner to make sure we hire people from the community to help build this center, and we’ve done a lot of outreach to the community, and I do appreciate Councilman Carr, your leadership in making sure that we get that done, so thank you. But you see here, over 200 nights a year, occupied days. The goal is 260 days per year. You’re gonna see this part of downtown active like you haven’t seen it before to complement what’s going on the other side of the Bonneville with the Premium Mall at Mall. What does this mean? It means room nights. And as we all know and love about Las Vegas, some of our visitors propping up our economy is so important and so critical for Las Vegas. You see here the room nights. You see here the employment and the spending impact. And what we believe this is doing is it’s really tipping us forward in downtown to get other projects built. We have the Fremont Street Experience Canopy, which is undergoing a major upgrade, a $32 million upgrade. They’ve been putting the panels in as we speak. This slide is meant to illustrate that now we’ll have the latest and greatest technology, and it’ll be bright enough to run it 24/7/365, which fits us. We’re Las Vegas. We need to have that. And it’s gonna continue to attract visitation to downtown and to Fremont. Those two projects, we really believe, are tipping forward major investment in downtown. Some of these upcoming projects that I’ll talk about, we’re not investing directly as a city, but that indirect investment with the Fremont Street Experience Canopy, as well as with the Expo Center, we believe is helping the bottom line for all these properties to pull the trigger on new projects. I wanna thank and compliment Derek and Greg Stephens for being well underway on construction of this beautiful resort casino, Circa, which is really gonna elevate downtown hospitality to a new level. The Boyd Gaming Group is also working on a new property with redevelopment of the Fremont property, and that is in active and underway. And in addition to Circa, we have a great new hotel going up with a new tower of Downtown Grand, 495 new rooms being developed by the CIM Group. This is in active construction. Get used to seeing photos like this. We’re gonna see more and more cranes this upcoming year, and this is really one of the exciting things about doing what I do and our team doing what we do, to actually physically see the fruit of your labor. Downtown is really taking off. We’re seeing more construction activity. This is a recent photo showing the activity of the tower going up, 495 new rooms. All in all, together these projects with a new non-gaming hotel property in Symphony Park, a Marriott AC Hotel, if you add all these hotel rooms together, over 2,000 new hotel rooms in downtown. That is incredible. That is gonna drive more employment. That is gonna drive more activity. That is gonna drive more spending, and as we all know, that is the economic engine of Las Vegas. And we have to invest in the future to get all the hospitality going. This is really a wonderful amount of momentum. With all this hospitality, you’re hearing part of the conversation throughout the region about professional sports. We believe we have a great partner in the Renaissance Companies and an investor, Bao Post Group, out of Boston, that can help make this project a reality. We’re in the early stages of negotiating this project, a new soccer-specific Major League Soccer stadium. Our current partner, the Las Vegas Lights FC, which I think have shocked the soccer world about how successful they’ve been in just a short period of time, being in the top tier of USL, United Soccer League teams, in terms of attendance and fan engagement and community engagement. They and their head, Brett Lashbrook, are in full support of this project. There’s gonna be an announcement of an exciting event by Major League Soccer later this month. Mayor, I know you have been invited to be a part of that, but Major League Soccer is at our doorstep, and you have my commitment, and I know our entire team at the city, to try to make this project a reality. This is the wave of the future with hospitality. Hospitality, sports, and entertainment are all starting to blend together, and we’re now being seen nationally and internationally as a leader, not only in hospitality, but also in sports and other types of entertainment like esports. This is part of the next chapter of downtown Las Vegas, and I’m excited to try to bring it to you and the rest of our community. Residential. Residential we’re really focused on. Focused on it in Symphony Park and throughout downtown. We have the ORC at Symphony Park. Councilman Carr and Mayor Goodman, thank you for taking part in the groundbreaking which we had recently, where we’re doing new multifamily Class A apartments, upgrading the quality of housing in downtown. As more and more people wanna live in downtown, they often ask our team, they ask their peers, they ask people in the community, where are the great places to live? What are... Where’s a great place to live? We have condominiums. We have some of the high-rises, but we haven’t filled in all the rest. And getting this quality housing where it’s not necessarily going to be or need to be a high-rise tower, this can provide a lot of housing in a short amount of time. So, this project is being developed by Southern Land, a developer out of Nashville. They’ve broken ground. They’re finalizing the financing, and there’s construction activity going on on-site. In addition to that, their neighbor, Aspen Heights, also we had a groundbreaking, and they’re going vertical on additional 290 units. Combine those two projects, are about 600 units of new housing. That is instant population in downtown. I cannot understate the importance of that. As we grow our community and grow our downtown, we need more people not only working downtown, but living in downtown to grow it. Fremont 9 has opened and quickly filled up 225 new units of housing. But I wanted to kind of rip through real quickly some of maybe the smaller projects that are also so important to upgrade the quality of housing in downtown. A trend we’ve seen is to take older apartment buildings or older motels and have investors put their money where their mouth is and invest in downtown. So, this is a property in Ward 3 at 1800 New York Avenue that was in disrepair, and the investor, Omega Investments, is putting money in to bring new units on into downtown. Similarly, Cameron Foulard looking at a property on South Las Vegas Boulevard. You see here the photos on the left, the before, and the photos on the after in the right. And this is really the heart of redevelopment, the heartbeat, if you will. In order to have downtown as an attractive place for investors, for business, we have to physically upgrade downtown, and we need private partners. Cameron Foulard is a wonderful private partner. I think every downtown in the country needs a Cameron Foulard. We’re grateful and happy to have him as a partner and all our partners. Abraham Enterprise, again, you see another property here on South Sixth Street, boarded up, and you see here what it’s gonna look like when it’s completion. All these projects, we moved forward through you and the City Council over this past fiscal year. La Jolla Development, another one on East Fremont at 1924. You see the property in disrepair, needing new investment, and you see here what is being proposed to breathe new life into this property on the east part of East Fremont. The Medical District is incredibly important. We continue to work closely with the School of Medicine on the operating side. They’re having wonderful success having stood up the School of Medicine. We wanna help make this project a reality, and we’re working closely with them, not only as a department, but as a city, to try to make this happen. The Medical District itself, we continue to meet with all of our stakeholders to advance healthcare and medicine in the Medical District, and our real vision here is to bring world-class healthcare to Las Vegas. So, we... How do we do this? We have to make sure everything fits together. We have to plan it right. We have to coordinate it. We have to get the right infrastructure in place. So, we’re investing money in roads, in the streets. We’re looking to invest money in additional parking in the Medical District. It is a tight area for new medical operators and even the existing ones to try to grow, so we need to build more infrastructure in the district, and we’re committed to doing that. The Innovation District. Our department has worked very aggressively and closely with our IT department and an entire team working on the Innovation District. We have not rested on our laurels. We had a great start with an autonomous shuttle that was the first in live traffic flow in the nation. We actually had the first two drivers of this shuttle. They were actually number one and number two to have on their driver’s license autonomous vehicle driver. We’re known now nationally and internationally as a leader in smart mobility and autonomous vehicles. We recently, through the RTC and federal DOT, got a grant to take this kind of technology into our Medical District. What this has done is it’s really tipped us forward in making sure we coordinate it all, put infrastructure in the ground, be able to have the vehicles, talk to the physical infrastructure, meaning the streetlights, sensors in the ground, and all the companies that we’ve worked with now wanna actually do business in Las Vegas. So, we have wonderful partners from around the world that are now investing their money and technology in Las Vegas, and now are saying, “Hey, Las Vegas is such a great place to do business. I wanna set up shop there.” And so, how do we do that? We’ve making sure we have the plan in place, but we also have a physical space. We saw an opportunity, and we took advantage of it. The University of Phoenix vacated the ground floor of the Bank of America Building, which was the Red Flint Innovation Center. They left a turnkey. They left all the desks, all the infrastructure behind, and we said, “Well, we’ll gladly take it, and we’ll lead with our chin.” We’re the lessy of this space, 11,000 square feet, and we just started. We just inked the lease, not even two months ago, and it’s all full now. So, that shows you the tremendous growth here. This is kind of some of the behind-the-scenes work, and we have a great team of over six, seven people, and I’m afraid I’d miss someone if I’d name them all individually, but our economic development team and our IT team are working very closely with working with business and industry to have them stand up a presence in Las Vegas. This left side of the chart shows all the companies that have a physical presence there now, with some leases just being inked as we speak. But already, we’re filling up this space to now where we’re thinking, “Okay, how does this grow? Where do we find more space to continue this in downtown?” And then, the events. One of the things about the IT industry is a lot of the business is done at events. We know this from CES. We know this from all the conventions that come here, but how do we take advantage of people being here and say, “Hey, it’s not enough that you come three or four times a year. We want you here permanently.” And so, one of the things that Scott Adams is quick to tell me, Bill, is you need to always think about building a better mousetrap. How do we get business and industry and investors here? And I think we’re doing that with this project. Business wants to be here. We have major global business that is knocking on our door. How can I get my business here? NTT Data is an example, one of the largest global IT companies in the country, and they partner with Dell within the U.S., and they have stood up a presence in our Innovation Center. They’re taking space. They’re quickly gonna outgrow that space, and now looking for, “How do I grow out of that space and into the community?” So, this is a real, real exciting initiative. As part of this Innovation District, we see new businesses moving in. This is a business, Trend Nation, which is an e-commerce business, taking a property on Las Vegas Boulevard that was rundown and on the northern part of Las Vegas Boulevard, and you see here the before and after. There’s a ribbon cutting coming up later this month. We’re really excited that all the business activity now that we’re starting to see from this initiative. But I mentioned at the outset, we cannot forget about all of our assets outside of downtown. We have some great assets in the northwest part of the city in Ward 6. And Councilwoman Fiore, I look forward to working with you in the upcoming year to help make this happen. We have a section of land that we have patented from the BLM here on the left-hand side. Not the greatest illustration, my apologies, but you see her in relation to the Las Vegas Pioft Golf Course. In the past, everyone viewed this property as maybe too far out, or how do we get to it? How do we bring infrastructure to it? Development is quickly catching up to it, and so this is an important asset to develop for business and industry. It’s uniquely situated near Creech, as well as Nellis Air Force Base, and we’re also working on lands near this to develop business parks as well, to have more business and industry. We have great residential communities in the northwest. We need great employment bases in the northwest. We can and we will develop this responsibly, being sensitive to the National Monument and also all of the wonderful land preservation that happens out in the northwest, but we also have to realize this is an incredible opportunity, and we’re committed to making this happen, to develop a business park out in the northwest. We have some great new tools that we’ve been using now for the past several years. One of them is new markets tax credits. I wanna thank my entire team for doing such a great job on this. We have done some great projects in the past. You see here on the top of the slide, there’s some great new opportunities. We have to get... Do a better job of getting the word out there that there is money on the table now for new projects. We have charter schools. We can do food deserts, fresh food alternatives, health centers, manufacturing, workforce programs, nonprofit facility development. We received an allocation from Treasury just a couple of months ago of $45 million in federal income tax credits that we sell to investors. That turns into cash that we make into interest-only loans to eligible projects in eligible low-income communities. These are the kind of communities we’ve... And projects we’ve invested in the past. We’re gonna do more of it, and we’re gonna have a great impact on the community. One of these projects, the word that I think of, and Councilwoman Diaz, I’d appreciate your feedback, too, is...
Bill? I just have a question about the northwest, that one slide about the business property up in the northwest.
Yes, Councilman.
Does that piece... What kind of infrastructure is in place for that piece as far as sewer, electricity? I know the roads go up there, but does all that have to be put in in order to get that thing up and running?
Councilman, there is some infrastructure. There is some power and some water availability, but there is more... The rest of the infrastructure, the roads, the gas, the sewer, we would have to pull out to that property. So, that’s a great observation. This is not gonna be an overnight project. This is something that we, as a city, have to invest in over the future, so it is gonna take time. So, it’s not shovel-ready today, but it’s something that we have to look to the future and think, “How do we invest? Invest responsibly when private industry is ready to take advantage of it?” of this site? But we have had major employers look at this property for data centers, for industrial complexes. We're running out of that kind of space in the entire Las Vegas Valley. And so this is really an important asset that not only we're looking at, but private industry is looking at also.
So I guess we're going to have to talk about how we're going to pay for that, right? I mean, who's going to pay to put all that in there? Is it going to be us or a partnership with the people that are going in there? So that's, it's kind of like Apex. I mean, Apex really wasn't going to happen until the infrastructure came in. So that's going to be, I mean, that's a great project, but that's going to be a big conversation on how we're going to do that. So I look forward to hearing about that sometime in the future because you're right, it's not, we're not going to do that tomorrow, but we need to plan for that.
Yeah, and Councilman, I think the way we think of it is not build it and they will come, but build it and they are coming. So we'd like to do that hand-in-hand with private industry so that we can invest responsibly, but then the private sector is investing heavily as well. So with the East Las Vegas Library, this is an example, one of the types of projects that was supported by the New Market Tax Credit Program. We work very closely with the Library District, with private investors. And you see that the result. We believe this is a generational project, which is really going to help transform this community and is a long overdue asset for the community. These are the kinds of projects that maybe traditionally you wouldn't think of as a business project or an economic development project. But this will attract more private investment into this community. We are already talking to investors that have interest in doing housing in this community, small business in this community. So we believe this is kind of seed investment, if you will, to prime the pump and get this community better positioned for new private investment and more business activity. We have opportunity zones that have been approved by the governor. Fortunately, a large portion of the state's opportunity zones reside inside the city. And we are working very closely with private investors to try to attract capital through these opportunity zones. The money doesn't touch the city or flow through the city, but it's such a big federal tax benefit that is encouraging investors to invest in our community. Aspen Heights with their project in Sepiti Park, they actually closed on an opportunity zone investment. And we have other projects that are looking to close on investments as well. So this is making it more attractive for new real estate investment and development in our community. We think it's going to be an extra tipping point to tip some of these maybe hard-to-finance projects forward in our community.
Hey, Bill, excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
Through you. Well, can you give us, at one point, maybe just in a briefing or just let me know where we are and what, how many projects have applied and who have closed and where they are and what's going on with them? Because we're kind of, I just had a question the other day. We're talking about them and I don't know who, where we are with them. And if any of them's closed or successful, the dollar amount of them and et cetera. So just like opportunity zone.
And if I might, Councilman Creer, to Mr. Arndt, could you describe what the opportunity zone is? Because we have a viewing public, and this is an outstanding investment opportunity. And you know we're always looking for private partnerships. So if you just tell them and how many we have, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Through you to the Councilman, Councilman Creer. Opportunity zones as an incentive is a tax deferral incentive. So real estate investors that might be familiar with a 1031 exchange program where there's a deferral of a potential capital gains tax liability is similar to that but different. So it was an incentive passed at the end of 2017 by Congress. It's administered by the IRS and Treasury. And what it does is an investor that invests in an eligible area, anywhere in the country, including our community in these zones, if you invest in that area, you can invest money that you have as a capital gain. So whether you sold your Apple stock, your Amazon stock, your Boyd Gaming stock, and you made a capital gain, or a piece of real estate and you made a capital gain, if you have a cap, potential capital gain, instead of paying that capital gain, you can take the sale proceeds from that investment, invest it in this area, defer the capital gains tax for up to seven years. And then after 10 years, any future appreciation in that investment, you are permanently excluded from further capital gains tax. So a way to think of it is, if I have $10 million that I invested in there here, I basically kick the can, I'm paying capital gains till 2026. And then after that, if I wait 10 years, if my investment goes above and beyond my initial investment, I can exclude that gain from capital gains. So it's long-term money, long-term investment. To answer your other question, Mayor, what, or I think, Councilman, I think it was your question, what has closed? Aspen Heights closed on an investment of $29 million. It was a big part of their capital stack. It was over a third of the cost of the project that was closed through that investment. It was $29 million that went into that project. So the money never passes through the city. So how that money is recognized, it's essentially money from a group of investors. And then when they file that tax return, they submit their tax return to the IRS each year, and then they get that benefit.
If I could add to that, just what is the minimum amount that's acceptable and how many opportunity zones are there and have been granted to the city of Las Vegas?
So Mayor, we have, we asked for 26 census tracts, and the governor approved 22 census tracts. So this is all the area highlighted in the blue. I'm not sure how all that shows up on the screen because it's light, but it's really the core downtown. You go out into the Charleston Boulevard, out into the west, as far west as Rainbow and along Sahara as well. And then also part of the eastern part of downtown too, and East Las Vegas. All those areas are eligible, so that's kind of set in stone?
Areas, wards one, three, and five.
One, three, and five, that's correct.
And then the minimum investment that is needed or is required to be able to participate in investing in this?
There is no statutory minimum. There is no statutory maximum. But because you're having to engage tax professionals, legal professionals, we think it's going to probably end up being similar to New Market Tax Credits, where you're likely not going to see projects of smaller than $5 million benefit from the program. But we have heard nationally of small business, businesses benefiting from the program, like flower shops, restaurants, that sort of thing. I haven't seen that yet in Las Vegas, but the program does allow for that.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just for clarity through you, just so that the public also knows, there's sometimes a misconception, the fact that the city designated the opportunity zones. And I think it's important to realize that, as you said, we submitted for 26 tracts and we were, we were granted through the governor's office of economic development. I don't agree with those tracks at all. I think some areas of the, especially the areas of the historic West Side, were left out for areas that specifically are used to incentivize people to come into an impoverished area for development. Some key areas were left out of that, which I still don't understand how that is, but that's a different subject. But I just wanted to make sure that the public recognizes that we didn't pick these. I do think that it was not equitable how it happened, though.
And if I may continue here, Councilman Knutson, please.
Mr. Arndt, thanks so much for the presentation. I had a question, and maybe it's appropriate for an abbreviated answer in this council, but more appropriate later on in a briefing. I'm curious about the connection between the city's economic development efforts and the state and the county, as they are also working to develop those opportunity zones. And I'm just curious what the relationship looks like.
Thank you, Councilman Knutson. We've been working very closely with state business and industry as well as the governor's office of economic development. We did host a joint community forum here last year, actually in this chambers, where we invited all the community out. It was sponsored by the, sponsored by the Federal Reserve, and it was free to attend. There was a national expo that was here, I believe it was May, at Middletown Bay, which my team attended. We saw colleagues from the state and the county. One of the things that we're doing, and we haven't launched it yet, it's in beta version, but doing an online portal, because we believe the best thing that we, as a city, can do is be a connector. So we want to connect maybe that property owner, maybe that business, to Councilman Creer's point, that is looking for capital and doesn't know where to start, basically have a portal to connect investors, landowners, and businesses to locate their investment. So we're going to be launching that online portal here soon. We're talking to the state and some of our other partners to see if they wanted to join, but we're trying to promote our, our zones within the city of Las Vegas.
Thank you.
And so wrapping up, more quality housing, pardon me. We want to continue the momentum, so we're looking to, we're lucky to continue the more quality housing in downtown, focused on growing our key sectors with IT. Growing our IT industry, and I think my own voice is telling me I spoke too long. But attracting IT, filling vacant office space, this is really important for us because in order to get new office buildings downtown, we got to take care of what's vacant today, attracting new businesses. We're working very closely with all the property owners, supporting what I call best-of-class medical operators. We're growing a world-class medical district. How do we continue that within the greater medical district, but also in Sepiti Park and support new medical there? More garages for more new development, and then not to forget, forget about our assets in the northwest and support horizontal growth and new business parks in the northwest. That kind of wraps up my presentation, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, we have some more questions here. The report's great, Mr. Arndt, thank you. I would like a hard copy, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
And Councilman Creer, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. You know, Mr. Arndt, I, all the work that the EUD is doing, I think, is fantastic. And I think we're doing a lot of good work within, especially our community in Ward Five, and there's more to come. One of the areas that I think that we have not discussed and we talked about is inclusionary housing. As you know, there is a housing crisis and affordable housing crisis throughout the country, and we need to figure out ways that we can potentially have, if it's set asides or if it's something, to working with the developers that are coming into our wards. You know, cities ranging from Park City to Washington, D.C., to Santa Monica, to Burlington, Vermont, all have some type of inclusionary housing program. And we do not. And I think that it should come out of EUD, since you're dealing with many of the developers, especially in my area. I think there's still time to talk about that with our Southern Land Group in Aspen to see if we can figure something out with them. You know, I don't think the goal is to try to hurt developers and to try to, you know, limit profits, but we do need to try to find a way to, to find opportunities for those that aren't able to afford some of the things we're bringing in. So I would like to start up a conversation with your office and my office to talk about, at least vet the process of inclusionary housing, the pros and the cons, and see if we can get something going with, especially with my two major projects. Well, we have a number of projects, housing projects in our ward, but with, where, but which are within the RDA specifically. So if you can get with me, I'd appreciate that. And let's start that discussion.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman Knutson, please.
And thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Arndt. What I would add on to Councilman Creer is projecting out over the next 10, 15 years as we know our population's going to grow, if there's any projections around what income levels will, will look like for those incoming folks, and if we're being proactive and responsive to the housing conditions that they'll come into. Thanks.
Thank you. Just, it was a great report. I don't know how many of the council would like a hard copy, but especially for our new council members, I think it would be great either or to have a, you know, whatever you can give us technologically so we can review it and keep it. It's just full of great information. And when I think about the recession and what we've done so far and where we have to go, it's incredible. But the need for investment and the, certainly the boots-on-the-ground people moving into downtown, we hear it all the time. So thank you, Mr. Arndt. This is a report only, and therefore we don't need a motion, but we appreciate it. Thank you. And congratulations to you and your staff. Great work.
Thank you, and to all the council, thank you for your continued support. We can't do what we do without your support and your leadership, so thank you as well.
Thanks. Okay, we'll move on to 34. Is that correct? Thank you. Discussion for possible action regarding the ratification of Greg Whitzel as the Director of Parks and Recreation. Salary $155,968.75, $5,000 signing bonus benefits from the general fund. And hello, welcome. I haven't had the opportunity to meet you in person, but we welcome you, and a lot of accolades precede you. So, Mr. Adams.
Madam Mayor, Scott Adams, city manager. Let me echo what Bill said earlier. Congratulations to all the new council members on your swearing-in. I look forward very much, and I think our whole team does, to working with you as we go forward. I want to congratulate our new mayor, Pro Tem. It is great to see a fully seated council, and we're excited about moving forward and serving you as you move forward. These next two agenda items, I'm very excited about because I think, I can't remember a time where I've presented, or we have as a city, two more highly qualified individuals for ratification for appointment. Our first is a ratification recommended for our position of Parks and Recreation Director, and I'm recommending Greg Whitzel. Greg is Ben, recently the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Idaho Falls, Idaho. Prior to that, he was Parks and Recreation Director in Allentown, Pennsylvania. And Allentown is located between New York and Philadelphia, a very urban area. He is, he has a very lengthy bio, and I, we'd be here all day, and it's incredible bio. He is an invited member of the White House Conference on America's Great Outdoors. He's a certified park and recreation professional. He earned his master's degree in Recreation and Park Administration from Illinois State. He had a bachelor's degree in Recreation and Park Management from Penn State. And at Penn State, he was designated the Emerging Professional of the Year. Greg has been married for more than 20 years and has two teenage daughters. He is absolutely a rising star and a leader in national Parks and Recreation Management. It is my pleasure to recommend for ratification Greg Whitzel.
Welcome, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. On behalf of my family, my beautiful wife, Jenny, and my two daughters, Virginia and Ashley, we, we are so excited about to move here to Las Vegas and to get to work and working with all of you as well as the community as a whole. So thank you very, very much for this opportunity.
Well, we are just delighted for this. I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem, please, to make a motion on this agenda item 35 to retain you as the head of Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a motion to approve.
Thank you. There is a motion, and please vote, and please post. I'm trying. There it is. Unanimous congratulations. Now, I have to ask, Mr. Whitzel, could I ask, are your daughters living here, or have they flown the coop and gone somewhere else?
No, they're, we're all in the process of transitioning here. They'll be going to Faith Lutheran Academy, starting here in just a couple of weeks.
Excellent. Wonderful. What, what grades are they going into?
One's going to be a senior, and the other one's going to be a sophomore.
Wonderful. We'll be welcoming your lovely wife of 20 years. Her name, please?
Her name is Jenny.
Hi, Jenny. Oh, my goodness, that reminds me, Tom Hanks. Why did Jenny come to my mind? I will never forget you. And Councilman Anthony, and then we'll go right on down.
Sure.
Please.
Nice to meet you. I'm Councilman Anthony. I represent Ward Four. I just want to make two comments. First of all, I know I speak for everybody up here. The parks in the city of Las Vegas are a big deal. We want to make sure they're, they're great parks, they're safe parks, they're utilized by people, so it's just really important. One, one seed I want to plant in you is, you ever heard of pickleball? Okay? So I, I built the first pickleball court up in Police Memorial Park, and then I built a couple more at Drangle Hills. It's the fastest-growing sport in the United States, as well as the city of Las Vegas. They're, it's building, and they're going to show up. I talked to Jorge Cervantes and Tim Hackett. My vision is to have a premier pickleball international tournaments in the city of Las Vegas, just like the Mayor's Cup. The Mayor's Cup is the best soccer tournament in the world when it comes to cities, and I want to do that here in the city of Las Vegas. And we're already talking about... And we're already talking about building some kind of a complex up in Police Memorial Park. So put that on your radar screen. I think this can be a game changer for the city. St. George, Utah is big in it. We can actually generate a lot of revenue if we do this right. So I'd like to sit down and talk to you about that, but I just wanted to put that out in public so you're on the spot and everybody can hear. So I look forward to talking to you about it.
Look forward to working with you.
And if you would, Councilman Anthony, a little credit due to the Plaza for, after your leadership on the first pickleball court, to create that first competition. Very well attended, and it is, it's wonderful. There's so many wonderful things to do here. You just will never think of going back to Pennsylvania or Idaho or anywhere else. Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Whitzel, thank you and welcome to the city of Las Vegas. Even though you picked faith over gormon, I'm still going to give you a, going to give you a fair shake. And, you know, I just wanted to tell you that to piggyback on Councilman Anthony, the parks are very important to our community. I'm fortunate to have some pretty large, city-large parks in our area, and they're very important to the community. You know, we value them. A lot of activities take place through them, so you're stepping into a very, you know, I think, a strong position to really make a difference in our community. Also, you're just fortunate that you have a great staff on your team. I've been fortunate to work with them on many projects and things we're moving forward with. So you're inheriting some very good people. And I also just want to thank Maggie Plaster for for really doing a wonderful job as our acting Park and Recs Director. She has been extremely responsive to me, and her and her entire team have just been great. We have a number of things going on, and it's exciting. So welcome, welcome to Jenny and the family. Vegas is great, a little hot, but it's going to be fantastic. Just get a pool. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we are excited. It's going to be wonderful. And for our physically challenged, I know we're really trying to make an impact there, creating, you know, just different facilities. And again, Jerry Walker and his team and the maintenance of the parks and everything else that goes on, it's just, you won't want to sleep, I promise you. And so we welcome you, we congratulate you. And ladies, you've got a beautiful bunch to go home to every night. They are just sweet-looking families. So welcome to you all. Hope you enjoy every moment here. If not, be sure, tell your husband, your father. He'll go immediately to Mr. Adams, who will fix the problem. So welcome and thank you. And to absolutely applaud Maggie Plaster, you have been absolutely stellar. She started off working in Betsy Fretwell's office and the city manager, so she's done a great job and a family person, too. So thank you, welcome, and thank you. And you have another announcement, I understand, correct? Thank you, welcome. Look at this. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Adams, please.
Okay, the next agenda item, I have also.
Oh, let me read that if I might, then, to be perfectly formal and follow protocol. Agenda Item 35. Discussion for possible action regarding the ratification of Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler as Chief Community Services Officer. Salary at $195,000 benefits and out of the general fund. And now back to you, you're standing next to a smiling individual. Not a popular choice, huh?
Yeah, is that cute?
It sounds like our next nominee has a fan club here. It is very much my distinct pleasure to present to you for ratification Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler as the new director of, or I'm sorry, the new chief of community services. Lisa has actually worked for the city for quite some time. She is currently the Director of the Department of Youth Development and Social Innovation. She started with the city in 1997. She has a very lengthy bio and just incredible profile. During her tenure with the city, she's led many successful projects with unique insight and expertise on developing strategic public and private partnerships. There's been a whole bunch of them, like the Evolve Program, the Mayor's Fund, Reinvent Schools, the Strong Start Academy, I could go on and on and on. Lisa is an innovator, absolutely. She was appointed by Nevada Governor Brian Sandoval in 2012. Served five years on the Advisory Commission on the Administration of Justice and the Juvenile Justice Commission. In 2017, she was elected to serve as trustee on the U.S. Conference of Mayors Workforce Development Council. She's also appointed by the Clark County Board of Commissioners, served on the Family Services Department, Citizens Advisory Committee, and the Department of Juvenile Justice Services Citizens Advisory Committee. She has earned numerous awards, and I'm just going to highlight a few. In 2017, she received the ICMA Community Heroes Award and the Clark County Law Foundation Champion of Service Through Justice Award. She was also named the 2016 Civic and Public Partner of the Year and 2014 Greenspun College of Urban Affairs Outstanding Alumni of the Year. And that's just a few of the many accolades that she's received. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in Environmental Studies and a Master of Public Administration from UNLV and a Doctorate in Public Administration from the University of Laverne in California. She's an alumna of the Leadership Las Vegas Class of 2007, and in 2012, she earned a Judicial Administration Graduate Certificate from Michigan State University. Yay. She completed Leadership ICMA 2016 and the ICMA Senior Executive Institute at the University of Virginia-Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service. And in August of 2019, she will receive a certificate in Education, Leadership, and Management from Georgetown University-Moor Court School of Public Policy. Very, very busy, Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler. She's married and is the proud mother of three children, so it is very much my distinct pleasure to present for ratification Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler.
You know, aside from all the practical information you just spoke to, this is a woman that has no end to the days that she puts in and delivers not only with her professional background and dedication and common sense and expertise, she's got a heart of gold. And I just, having worked with you these eight and a half years now, I just, I've never worked with anybody that you can always call at any time, get an answer, or we'll find out an answer. You've worked in so, so long in this city, but you're helping the school district. Your hands and your tentacles are everywhere. And so I'm just really excited, and I know you'll be able to make some comments. Why don't we hear those first before we move for ratification?
All right, well, good morning, and thank you, Mayor, members of the council, to our newly seated council members. I've worked with at least two of you in your previous capacities and look forward to working with you in this capacity and also with Councilwoman Seaman. It's really been a privilege to serve the city of Las Vegas and its community for the past 23 years. And I really want to thank City Manager Scott Adams for recommending me for this appointment and entrusted me with the role, and also Karen Duddleston for passing the torch. Local government bears the responsibilities for addressing community challenges. Residents look to City Hall for solutions. And whether it's managing the homeless crisis or developing affordable housing, supporting our education system, family wage jobs for residents and preparing for the workforce of the future, or neighborhood preservation and revitalization, these areas and others fall under the Chief Community Services Officer. And with your approval, I intend to use the local, regional, and national relationships I've developed to further our efforts through the public-private partnerships and collective action. I'm a servant leader, and people know I will roll up my sleeves and I will work alongside our team to get the job done. But this has been a long time in the making, and I have some acknowledgements because I didn't get here by myself. And so I want to acknowledge my fellow directors, who are top-notch and experts in their fields. We also have two alumni here, Dr. Barbara Jackson and Claudette. Also, the staff, our community partners, my sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority and the members of the Divine Nine, my mentors, I see Commissioner Weekly and Assemblywoman Deana Neal in the audience, and my friends. But I want to certainly acknowledge my family as my anchor, and I know many of you had your family with you today. Councilman Knutson, my children did make it, although they're laying on the floor over there. And certainly, my husband, who has made sacrifices both professionally and personally so that I could be in this position, my parents, who are here and who have joined me, former City Councilwoman Betty Morris and retired Air Force Senior Master Sergeant James Morris, my two sisters, my children and nieces who are here, and anyone else who helped me along the way. I'm really excited about this opportunity. I will do everything to further the city. We will remain iconic, and we will work together on all of those things. So thank you.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve.
Please vote and please post. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Do we get a chance to?
Oh, go ahead, please. Don't go away. Dr. Hibler, Dr. Morris Hibler, come back. Comment.
Don't leave.
Or compliments.
He's got something to say.
Thank you.
First, I want to congratulate you on something that is extremely, extremely well-deserved. And I have to also thank our city manager for recognizing that and for making the call to say, "Look, we have the talent within. She is exemplary on all levels, and let's make her a part of your direct report team." So I want to thank you as well. Dr. Hibler, I tell you, since the first day I've gotten here, you have been nothing but exemplary. When I asked our city manager to, you know, "I need someone to work with regarding the areas that are concerned in our ward," he directed me to you. And I said, "Okay, well, if you say she can get it done, then she can get it done." And you have exceeded all expectations. You are professional on all levels, you are extremely, extremely bright. I trust you. When you tell me something, "This is the way we should go," then I say, "Okay, Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler, then I'm going down that route." You tell me where to go, who I got to talk to, and what I got to say, and you have not let me down yet. I do not anticipate that you would do that moving forward. We have some major initiatives that we started that you've helped me start with our Ward 5 Works Initiative, getting people working, trained, ready, prepared to go to work in our ward. And, you know, we're just getting going, but it's all due to your hard work and dedication towards that. And I want to thank you. You know, you have so much support internally and externally, and it shows by the number of people who are here today. I mean, you've got Assemblywoman Neal, you've got my friend Commissioner Lawrence Weekly here, and all these people coming out, my soros of AKA Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. It is a pleasure to see you guys down here. So it's great, I'm excited, I'm excited for you, I'm excited for the city. And then I would be remiss if I didn't thank Karen Duddleston, whose position you are taking. Karen, I tell you, we've worked together, probably, I guess, since I've been on Planning Commission for two years, we've worked together for three years now. It's more than I've worked with most people in the city. And Karen has always been responsive, another person that is highly, highly, highly intelligent, and is not one to go out and brag about that, but she just goes out and does it. So thank you, Karen, and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with you. Thank you, and let's go to work.
Congratulations, and to echo the words, of course, Mrs. Duddleston, you have been just such a tremendous inspiration here and followed through on so many issues that in the past had not even been touched. So thank you very much, and we know you will enjoy whatever is lying ahead of you and the trips and retirement, all of that. Thank you for this wonderful time you've given each of us. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Leslie. Okay, we'll move on now to Agenda Item 37. Discussion for possible action regarding the appointment and nominee Jeff Rogan to the Ward 1 seat of the Planning Commission. Mr. Knutson, Councilman Knutson, may we have your motion, please?
I would move to approve.
All right, there's a motion to approve the appointment of Jeff Rogan to the ward seat on the Planning Commission. Please vote and please post. Congratulations to Mr. Rogan, please. If you will, he will get proper certification on that. Agenda Item Number 38. Discussion for possible action regarding the appointment and nominee Kathleen Be- how do you pronounce it? Benenstein. Thank you, to the Ward 1 seat of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Mr. Councilman Knutson.
Madam Mayor, Kathleen is sitting in the audience, and I would just like to acknowledge the fact that she was a really wonderful asset, and I got to learn quite a bit about her and the community she represents and her plans, working on the Senior Citizen Advisory Board. With that, I would move to approve.
Thank you. Could you stand right there in front? Thank you so much. And there's a motion. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Congratulations, thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 39. Discussion for possible action regarding the reappointment of James Wright to the Southern Nevada Health District Public Health Advisory Board. Mayor Pro Tem, Fury, I understand you're prepared to make this motion.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I move to approve, item number 39.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And is Mr. Wright here? Nope. Okay. And that motion carries, and he will be notified. Thank you very much. Agenda Item 40. Discussion for possible action regarding the reappointments of Yvette Weinstein-Hall and Elizabeth Pataretu to the Senior Citizen Advisory Board as my appointments as mayor. And I move to approve both these appointments. Please vote and please post. And those reappointments carry. Thank you very much, and congratulations. And Agenda Item 41. Discussion for possible action regarding the reappointment of Sam Cherry to the Planning Commission is my appointment. And what a wonderful job, Sam Cherry. If you're watching, I know you're not here because you're working and earning, but you've just done a stupendous job, know the history of our city and what's going on, and are so devoted to this position. So I'm grateful that you have indicated a willingness to be served, and I do want to move to approve that. So please vote.
And Madam Mayor, real quick, I just want to comment that I think that Sam Cherry is an excellent choice that you've made as Planning Commissioner. He's done a great job in his service chair, and he's just a really good guy that is trying to do good stuff for our community. So I think this is fantastic.
Okay, thank you. And if you'll vote, and please post. Okay, congratulations, Sam. I look forward to your continuing work. And Agenda Item 42. Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting. Bill Number 2019-20. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Colton, and thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2019-20, First Amendment in Orders to amend the Unified Development Code to repeal and replace Chapter 19.09 thereof pertaining to form-based code in transacc zones and deprive further related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on Agenda Item 42. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Agenda Item 43. Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption Later Meeting. Items Number 43 through 46, bills Number 2019-19 and 2019-21 through 2019-23 will be heard later meeting. We'll now move on to new bills. New bills. Items Number 47 through 49, bills Number 2019-24 through 2019-26 will be heard at Recommending Committee Meeting Monday, July 15, 2019. City Attorney, would you read the new bills, please?
Well, Your Honor, thank you. Bill Number 2019-24, in Orders to adopt that certain document entitled the Fifth Amendment and Restatement to the Development Agreement for Sky Canyon Master Plan Community and Privaterated Matters. Bill 2019-25, in Orders to adopt that certain document entitled amended and restated Development Agreement for Sunstone Master Plan Community and Privaterated Matters. And finally, And finally, Bill Number 2019-26, says orders related to nightclubs and establishments with a tavern limited to alcoholic beverage license, amending provisions of the LVMC Chapter 6.39 to exempt from licensing and regulation as a nightclub any establishment with tavern limited license with the Downtown Entertainment Overlay District, amending LVMC 6.50.250 to authorize conditions to be imposed on such establishments regarding outdoor patron lines and outdoor speakers, and providing for other related matters.
Thank you very much. The new bills, 2019-24 through 2119-26 are assigned to the July 15, 2019 Recommending Committee Members. This next time, and this may change because we have new councilperson seated, but at least for the first one on the 15th, there's a tie-over and the abance to this date. It will remain the same, which is Councilman Anthony, Councilwoman Fiori, Mayor Pro Tem Fiori. And at this point, I think I'll just take that third seat, and if any so designated are unable to attend the clerk's office, we'll coordinate, finding a substitute is necessary at my direction, because these are the mayor's appointments. I do want to clarify, too, that probably because of everybody's schedules, and I want to make sure I can talk to Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Anthony, that their schedules will permit continuing service, so. And I do want to make sure that we include our new councilpersons, but that's more meetings. So we will now move on. Do we just go right forward? I have 20 of 12. What do you have? Hold on one second, let me turn off the microphone. I think what I'm going to do is, because of the excitement of today, and my heart's still aflutter, and all these new people joining us and everything, we will take a recess till 12. It's 20 minutes of 12. We'll take a 20-minute recess, and then we'll go through everything else.
I love it.
Thank you.